All right, we're gonna start. Okay, I want to welcome everyone for the zoning board of appeals for tonight's agenda Wednesday, September 22nd. It is 6:30 PM at room 320 multiservice center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I want to call the meeting to order. My far-right associate member, Mr. Chris Conti, our clerk, Mr. Jim Akabachi. My far-left associate member, Mr. Richard Sample. Our regular member Jake Morrison, myself, the chair, Nazir Al-Khlas, also present. We have Mr. Our town planner, Mr. Ken Buckland. We have also just walked in, also a regular member, Mrs. Veronica DeBeneese. On the preliminary business, we have to vote for this signature for E, for electronic signature, so we have to vote this in and sign here again for it.
This will, electronic signatures can be used on documents that are filed on the registry of D.
Need all members, or? Yep, you do, I see it.
Should we vote for it?
You should vote for it as well.
All right, can somebody make a motion to do E-signatures?
So moved.
Any discussion on this? Any discussion?
I'm not clear on exactly what it is. It's electronics, signatures at the registry of Ds.
You can get an email and sign by email.
You don't have to come in and physically sign the document, you can do it by email.
Oh, regarding our meetings that we're having here and decisions.
Regarding the decisions, do you make this report?
Okay.
Okay, do I have a second on Jim?
I'll second.
Second Veronica, all in favor say aye.
In a minute.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, so passes unanimously. All right, we're gonna start with the continued public hearing for, oh, 39-20 for the rain car wash, request to continue the public hearing till August, October 13th. All right, by the attorney Douglas Troyer. So we have a motion.
So moved.
Motion to continue 39.
I have a question on it.
Go ahead.
What's the reason for the continuance?
I guess they're not ready with their plans, they're changing some things.
And there's a, when is their date where we would have to make a decision?
It will be, in two seconds.
It'll be 65 days after the close of the hearing, or 100 days from when they actually applied, which is August 11th.
Well, it's on your page right here.
It's on the agenda that we get today?
So we still have plenty of time, in other words.
That's right.
Let me look quick.
Okay, I, the only comment I would make would be that this would be the last time that we would extend without having them extend in writing for our decision. Other than that, I would be okay with it.
Extend, extend the...
They did have an email.
So, but are they extending our date first for having to make a decision on their project? Or are they just asking for an extension, which would be different, right?
They're asking for a continuance of the public hearing to the next...
Continuance, next time, when they come, we'll ask them for an extension for the decision. They still have time until November 9.
Okay.
Okay?
I think, if I may, I think what Veronica's getting at is every time they continue, that's two last weeks that we've had to hear testimony.
Right.
So her point, I believe, if she can correct me if I'm wrong, is that when the applicant requests a continuance, she would like to see two weeks added to the end date to complement that continuance, so that the board still has the same amount of time.
Yes, that's correct.
Is that what you, okay?
Yeah, I understand, but usually, we do one meet when you have another meeting ahead of you, so we have plenty of time. So next meeting, if they don't, say they don't...
Her point is if they ask for another continuance, we want to continue the end date.
Yes, the next meeting, but...
If they ask again, this time she's saying okay.
Next time we have to.
Okay.
All right? But there's no sense to start from every time somebody continue to it until we, at least we have an extra one. Now we have extra one. So next time, they definitely have to write an extension for the decision. All right, that being said, so we have a motion to continue 39-20 till...
I made the motion and she seconded it.
Second by Veronica, all in favor to continue 39-20 till October 13th, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, pause, abstain. And there was, one second, one second, so we're not losing track here.
Agenda, not like I have one. Unless it's in here, this this week's?
Got it?
First Hartford, yep. Okay, first Hartford, there was Chris and on that Conti. Let me keep my notes.
First Hartford, we just continued. What are we doing that till, till the 10th 13th, right?
October 13th.
October 13th.
13, yeah. All right, next one.
Mr. Chairman, on that one, since Jake Morrison wasn't at the last public hearing, did he listen to the tape and can act on the...
Yes, I did.
Thank you. It's on the record.
All right, thank you. All right, he was here in the opening. Last time wasn't discussed, it was just continued.
Oh, really? Okay.
All right. Okay, we go, the second one, 40...
It was a short list, then?
No, I mean, he could have listened to tape, say it's continued, he knows, so that's fine. 41-21 Trava Inc., 3119 Cranberry Highway.
For you, one for...
Somebody here from Trava?
Yes.
Two.
All right.
One second. Jake, take...
All right, I guess last time we reopened the public hearing to continue for discussion. Public hearing's still open. I believe last time, Chris and Veronica had some questions. Did you guys do some homework to ask the questions?
I, I, I did.
Before I start, I'm sorry, just your name and address for the record.
...
All right, thank you. All right, we'll start by Chris.
So I guess one of my questions that I have on that building, they're not going to be occupying the whole building, they're only going to be occupying some of the building. How is that heat and air conditioning set up? Is that separate for each tenant, or is that all for the whole building? I'm just concerned about odor for the other tenants.
We're gonna be setting up our own AC and all that, and the filters, filters for the air and everything.
I believe they addressed that at the last meeting.
That's okay, he could ask that, that's all right, go ahead. So you're saying you have your own HVAC, which I know that, like I said, they have their own HVAC each unit.
Each unit is separately metered and heated and air-conditioned, I believe.
It is, but, yes, yes, it is.
And I guess my other concern is that that building is what, an office building or a retail building? And we're gonna be switching it over, it's going to manufacturing. Such a nice building, I mean, I hate to, I think it should remain an office building and a retail space, myself. That's, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, Veronica.
So, one of the reasons that I was looking for the extension was not necessarily to ask you more questions, but to do a little bit of my own homework, so that I know that we're looking, what we're looking at. The state does put a lot of regulations on you, but obviously, we as a town are the ones that are impacted by what you're putting there. We do have some other facilities in place, but one that comes before us is looked at a little more. So, one of the things that I did discover in a little bit of the digging that I did was regarding the electricity draw for a facility like you're proposing to put in with the HVAC systems in interior agricultural growth, basically. There are a lot of cities that have experienced kind of load, overload for electricity use. So Massachusetts has put in place some restrictions and has required you to have different lighting...
Yes.
And some other things, so I was glad to see that. And I also noticed that you will have some generators in place?
Yes, absolutely.
What are the, what's the purpose of the generators?
Generators in case we lose power.
And that was the only reason, was for power loss?
I believe so, I'm not 100% sure, but I believe so, yes.
Yeah, okay. Because obviously, that would be your concern for crop loss, if you don't have the...
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, okay. So basically, that's what I had wanted to do, was to look into that, and that's what I found out, and I'm, I'm good with your project.
Thank you.
Just want to mention, before any applicant on these facilities, before they come for us, they probably work at least one year with the state back and forth, and this is our last stop. It's not like they come here, I mean, the state sorts them, filters them through everything. Then, I mean, how long you been working on that permit?
Over two years.
Over two years?
Yes.
So, so it's not like, just that you come here, you give it to them. So it's a lot of work, I know that, and it is what it is, I guess. All right, Jimmy, do you have a question for German?
I'm all set.
You're good. Jake, you didn't say on this, Richard. I'm sorry, but you could have any comment.
No comments.
No comment, okay.
No, I'm all set, sir.
You're good. Anyone in the public want to speak against or favor this project? I hear none. Anything you guys would like to add before we close?
Make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
Any discussion before we close?
I thought we closed last time.
No, we didn't, we reopened, remember?
We left it open.
We reopened for discussion.
Reopened the public portion of it?
You two troublemakers wouldn't let us close it.
I thought we let you close it, I just didn't, we didn't...
No, we send the vote to reopen, so you have your questions, otherwise, we wouldn't be able to discuss.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to make comments. So, any, any discussion before we close?
I have none.
Okay, sir, you need, you have anything? Okay, hear no, so let's hear a motion to close.
So moved.
Do I have a second on the closing for 41-21 Trava Inc.?
I second.
Second by Richard, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, so it's closed. Any discussion before we make a motion? Whatever that motion is. Any discussion, hear no? Okay, somebody can, want to come with a motion?
Make a motion to approve as proposed standard conditions.
So we have a motion to approve by Jim, any discussion on the motion?
Need a second on that.
Before we second, do we need discussion before we second? We second, then discuss?
Yeah.
All right, do I have a second on that?
One moment, please. Ken, our administrator on Zoom asks for you to unmute. Go ahead, sorry, Naz.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion?
I second.
All right, any discussion on that motion? Discussion, Chris, Veronica, Jim, Richard. I hear no discussion. Okay, all in favor say aye? Chris?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Chris?
Nay.
Richard?
Aye.
And I say aye, it carries. Thank you, you're done. I'm yours, that's all, you're not done.
Thank you.
All right, you're very welcome.
And that's 41-0.
Right, so 41-21 Safran Holdings, LC variance slash used variance, 2297 Cranberry Highway storage units. Anybody from, let me see, request to continue, okay, they have a request to continue.
It's 4421 Safran Holdings.
All right, so any discussion on that, the continuance?
Make a motion to continue.
Do I have a second on that?
I second.
Second by Richard, any discussion on the continuance? You want to know what's the deadline on that? Veronica, the deadline on this?
Would, this would be their, their first or second, first request for continuance, correct?
Safran, it's 11/24, November 24, the deadline, so we have like three hearings.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
You're good? So, so the motion by Jim to continue till October 13th, second by Richard, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. Just let me look this, so it carries.
Mr. Chair, before we go forward, can we get the folders from our last one, 4121, back to the folder and in the box?
All right, we have to sign it first, let's sign it.
I don't know, I think you have the...
I don't have that decision.
Decision will have to be made and signed for future time, we don't have it with us.
All right, before we go forward, let me look at something.
Can I keep this?
Yeah, you could keep that one.
I think, I think they're both the same.
Is it the same?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll give you this one, since it's got a nice binder.
Forty-four, the...
On your left-hand side is...
Just let me look at something quick.
Thank you.
All right, that 44-21 Safran Holdings, there was Chris and Richard on that. We just have to keep record of that. Richard and plus Conti. Okay, that is Safran. All right, we're gonna move to the public hearing. 46-21 Daniel and Linda Reisner, special permit and a variance, 10 Pine Tree Drive for a garage addition. Anyone here for Daniel and Linda Reisner? You want to come forward, ma'am and sir? Sit down, state your name and address, and give us a few minutes to read the thing into record.
We need to read this in?
Yes.
Okay. And you put a note into the microphone that Sonia needs to give us something to sign for the next meeting on that, on that 40, okay, thank you.
Okay, Sonia on Trava Inc., we need the paper to sign. I guess we have to go in the office and sign it.
Our decision.
14-day. All right, here you go.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on September 22, 2021, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multiservice Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 46-21 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 621, and Article 13, Section 1352, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Daniel and Linda Reisner of 10 Pine Tree Drive, Wareham, Mass., proposing to construct a 22-foot by 13-foot addition on the front of the existing dwelling located at 10 Pine Tree Drive, Wareham, Mass., that appears on Assessors Map 5, Lot LC 8-A, in the R43 zoning district.
All right, very well, this matter, Mr. Richard Sample will be sitting on this matter. You name an address and tell us what you're doing.
Yes, hi, good evening, and thanks for meeting with us tonight. My name is Linda Reisner, my husband Daniel, and we are presenting to the board a request for a special permit, so we can construct that 22-by-13-foot extension onto our garage. The goal of that would be to recover enough room, so that we can park cars in the garage, because we took the back half of the garage for a bedroom for Dan's dad, who just moved in with us.
Okay, so let's, let me look quick here, what do we got?
So you're here for a side yard setback variance?
Yes, well, a special permit or...
Or special permit, depending on what we decide.
Can you just push this away a little bit from you, because, away, like a little bit away, because it's echoing, yeah, much better, thank you. All right, that is...
That's all we're hearing on this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is the side yard setback?
Yes.
Do you mind if I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, what's the zoning require for setback?
I believe it's 20 feet now, I think...
20, it requires?
2-0.
It requires 20, and you, and you want what?
The addition would encroach on the setback by three feet at the longest end, and five feet, because a lot of...
So you have, at the worst-case scenario, you'll have a 15-foot setback. At the best case, you'll have a 17-foot.
Correct.
Do you have plan for the existing conditions? Now, you have a plan here for everything. Do you have a plan just the existing house before you add?
Uh...
Are you, are you, you gonna add, or you gonna tear down and replace?
No, just add, push it out.
They're just coming out with it, Naz.
Yeah.
Drove by there yesterday and checked out the site.
So just...
One, one, excuse me, excuse, one, excuse me, hello? Excuse me, it's gotta be one at a time, we cannot be all arguments, gotta be on record. So, everybody will get their turn, let me finish with this. Explain to me again, you gonna add to the house?
We're gonna extend the garage from its existing position out 13 feet by 22 feet wide.
Okay, do you have a plan for the existing condition? This is the proposed...
The existing plot plan?
Plot plan for the existing, how does, how did it look before? Because this one is showing the proposed addition.
Right, so the existing would be...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, it's that thing in the front, sorry.
Right.
I'm not seeing right, all right.
The jet out.
All right, that's, that's only to help you, believe me.
Mm-hmm.
All right, here's the deal, this is a R43 setbacks of 15 feet, that's an existing non-conforming, according to the building inspector, under Article 6, 621, does not meet the side setbacks. However, in Article 13, Section 1352, if the board feels it's not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, the board can look at it and proceed as a special permit versus a variance, because it's existing non-conforming. That being said, I'm gonna start by Chris. Let me, I'm sorry, this one, who'd I say? Sample, Richard? What do you think? Now you could ask everything you want.
I, I just went by there yesterday, took it, checked out what they were doing, seems to be pretty much not a detriment to their house or the neighborhood, and I think they're, they need it to get their vehicles in, so.
Okay, excellent.
The house is very well kept up, and the neighborhood is also.
Thank you.
And I believe you got a letter of support, too, right?
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
From a neighbor, yes.
Yeah, I have no, no problem at all with this project at all, I think it's gonna be good for them.
Chris, you could comment, also, you're not voting.
I don't have any problem with this project.
Veronica?
I have no problem with this project.
Jimmy?
Let's vote him out of here.
All right, that being said, let's go to the public. Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor of the project? In favor? Want to come forward, state your name and address, and...
Jeff Przenowski.
Just get this, so it goes on record as close as you can, not too close, it'll echo. Yeah, that's good.
Jeff Przenowski, from 12 Pine Tree Drive, immediately adjacent to them. I've seen the plans, they keep the yard impeccable, I think it would be a positive impact on the whole neighborhood.
Okay, so you're in favor apparently?
I am in favor, yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone in favor? Anyone opposed? And you said you have some letter supportive?
It was a letter, Sonia added it to the...
It's inside our website. Packet, I believe.
It's in her folder?
Here it is.
I read it online, so it must be...
Is this Jeff Shroznowski? Do you want to read this for the record? Just for the record, we have a support letter?
Is this the same person that just spoke?
Yes.
Oh, oh, that's the same person? Okay, we don't need to...
So we don't, so...
We don't need to...
He noted that you're, you were heard, and your letter is in the record.
All right, I mean, that being said, the board have any question before we close? There's no question. If that being said, let's, do you want to add anything before we close? Okay, that's being said, let's move to close.
So moved.
I have a motion to close the public hearing, 46-21 by Jim, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Veronica, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's closed. Any discussion before we go forward?
Do we need to decide whether this is gonna be a special permit or variance?
We do. Any discussion before we do?
Pardon me?
Yeah, any discussion before we forward? No? Okay, let's hear the motion, then we could discuss.
So I, I contend that this is not a detriment to the neighborhood, and therefore, we should be able to act on this as a special permit, and I therefore move to treat this as a special permit.
All right, I have that motion by Jim, do I have a second on that?
I second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, any discussion? I hear none, all in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We vote as a special permit.
Okay, so now it's a special permit, now what's the wishes?
Make a motion to grant a special permit for whatever the hell this address is, 10 Pine Tree Lane...
Drive.
As requested, with standard conditions.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Second by Veronica, any discussion? No discussion, standard condition. I would like to add, as per plan drafted by Richard Hood, PLS, and dated July 28, 2021, it's gotta be built exactly by the footprint by the surveyor.
I would like my motion so amended.
So, I'm, okay, do, I, okay, so that was seconded by Veronica, all in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, it carries, 5-0-0, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck, thank you very much. 5-0-0, is there a paper to sign on that?
There is one to sign on this, if you want to do a little, if you want to feel like being a composer.
Well, you had a map.
What's that?
I said, he had a map, I didn't see a map.
You guys want to hand these back if you're done with them, if you want? I know you like to take them home and read them as you fall asleep, put them under your That's how I get all my paper clips, too.
I'm sorry, you took my agenda.
I took your agenda?
I'm sorry, here somewhere.
It's hidden.
Yeah.
Nazir has a hidden agenda, everybody.
Hidden agenda, watch that.
Let's find it. Bottom line.
All right, that's good. All right, we're gonna move to 47-21.
You got it.
Steven Herbert, variance, 2691 Cranberry Highway, legalize an already building structure. Okay, this matter will be Chris Conti sitting on it. All right, just give us a minute to read it under records, and we go forward.
We're gonna, that one's gonna go back in this folder, we gonna sign it now or after? That's, that's what you got in your hand, right there. Just being anal, because we don't want to end up with your, with her stuff in your folder, and your stuff in her folder, and...
I want to be good.
You're not looking for a three-foot variance, are you? So it wouldn't do you any good.
Well...
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on September 22, 2021, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multiservice Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 47-21 for a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Section 623. I just lost something, okay. The requirements of Article 6, Section 623, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Steven Herbert of 54 Portside Drive, Pocasset, Mass., requesting to legalize a structure in its current location at 2691 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass., that appears on Assessors That appears on assessors map, one thirty-two B, lot one, in the MR thirty zoning district.
Alright, name and address for the record, and tell us what you guys doing.
I'm John DiTalia, um, I'm here in regards to this, and I had with Steve.
Steve, uh, Steve what, sir?
My name's Steven Herbert, I'm from fifty-four Portside Drive in Pocasset, Mass.
Alright, so what's the deal tonight? What do you guys got?
Um, I believe this was a, uh, it's a pre-existing non-conforming item. This was a barrier wall that was up behind the building, and I think it was put up there originally years ago for sound.
It was a fence.
And, uh, so when we went in and gave this to the building commissioner.
Yep, I've been listening, sorry.
And, um, then the building commissioner turned it over to the building inspector, permit was issued, um, the barrier was put up, and, uh, then we got our inspection and it was signed off. And then I guess inspectors changed, or, or the commissioner changed. And when he came out, um, he seen that the barrier was new. And I went back and looked at the permits and said that really should've, should've asked for a variance to put it up. But we put it in the exact same spot as it was originally. Uh, and due to the configuration, a lot we could've changed anyways because it would've brought everything so close to the restaurant. And during this COVID, we were trying to get outside dining areas. So that, you know, with the twenty-five percent cutback, uh, and people in the restaurant, we were trying to make some outdoor dining. And, uh, just with timing and everything else, I think this thing just all hit it at the wrong time. I don't think this.
Mind if I ask a question in the middle, Naz?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, get me zeroed in on where we are, I don't know if I'm at Walmart or if I'm at Benny's, and I don't think those are Benny's anymore.
Across from Robertson's and.
Okay.
Max Auto Body.
So this is, um, is this Shooter's Restaurant?
Yeah, the old Shooter's.
The old Shooter's.
The old Shooter's, what is it now?
Shenanigans.
Shenanigans. So there's been some shenanigans going on over there?
There's some shenanigans going on all day, all night.
Okay.
Not by, not by choice.
Now I get zoned in on who's in front of me and why, and so you got a retaining wall where?
Um, it's in the very, it's the very back property line. Um, it, it's been there, uh, since Steve has taken the restaurant over.
It was an existing fence the kids used to squeeze in at the end of the night, through the chain link gate. Cause they'd have to leave the back door unlocked while the rest of the building was locked while we'd restock for the next day. And they'd squeeze in, they're like, oh, come on, come on, come on, try to get the girls to give them one more beer, one more shot. And I'm like, oh, it's, we already called last call. So when we closed up with the start of the COVID, I had, uh, I said, well, I'm gonna fix this. Went, they said because it was over six feet, I had to pull a permit. Went and pulled a permit. I took the existing chain link fence with a machine and pulled the pipes right out of where they were, and went back with six by six timbers and built the barrier wall. The commissioner seemed to think he wanted a, um, panic button door on the outside of the building, I did that. Fire Department came in, they said they wanted a lit exit sign, I did that. Come back, they said they wanted outdoor fire extinguishers, I did that, they wanted them tagged and labeled. I said, well, I don't know how this is gonna stand up because they're paper tags. He says, well, you can get these, uh, fire extinguisher panels with glass doors with a breaker thing. I did that. They've inspected every aspect of everything I've done over there, I've done it to the letter of the law. Eighteen months later, or however many months later, they come back and said I don't meet setbacks. The time for that would've been before I started ripping the fence down, before they granted me a permit.
Yeah, but wait a minute, let me interrupt you.
Signed off.
You ripped the fence down without a permit?
No, I pulled the permit.
Okay, okay, I just wanna be clear.
I pulled the permit, and, and the commissioner came down. He went over it and said, okay, yeah, you definitely gonna need a permit for this because it's over six feet. He said, what are your plans on the door? I was just gonna put it like an exterior door on, I wasn't thinking panic button door because I thought it was outside, there's no roof that's. He said, no, he wanted a panic button door, where they press the bar and it opens. So it'd be lockable from the outside, but anybody trying to exit the building, will be able to just hit that panic button door and go out. I said, okay, he said, we're gonna wanna a lit exit sign above that, so people know that it's actually an exit if they come out this back door, they'll know that that's an exit out of the restaurant. I did the fire extinguishers, we came in, removed an interior door, we pulled a second permit for that and a window. Everything they've done, they've inspected, they've asked me to put more full stations in at doors, at entrances, they wanted another smoke in the back room. I mean, I've done everything that everybody's required me to do. I thought I was on the home stretch opening back up, then I get a letter saying I'm not in compliance, and I need to address this and ask for, um, for forgiveness from the board because I don't meet the setbacks. The thing is, I'm asking for forgiveness for a pre-existing non-conforming situation is, I guess, where I'm at. Because the whole thing back there doesn't really conform. Not just what I did, but the fence, everything was, I went right in line with the way everything was previous.
Alright, let me.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I went by there and took a look at what was going on, they had a fence, like he said, and all they did was take it out, and now it's just a solid wall with a door in it.
Okay.
I mean, it's just.
Alright, let me ask you something.
I can see it.
Whi- whi- which, which part is the violation? I mean, is all the shaded stuff is the violation?
No.
There's a couple of feet, if somebody could show us, which one the viol, where are we here for tonight? Which one?
We're here for this back.
Is it, is it this, this line or this?
This is along the property line.
This is the property line?
This is the property.
And this is, and this is the?
Yep, that's the existing one.
And that's the, that's the, that's the fence as it is now?
Correct. That's what you're here for. You see, even the building doesn't conform all the way.
No, that's, I s, I saw this and I think that it's wrong.
Aren't you here for this violation, not this?
No, that's not about.
The side or the back? Are you here for the side or the back issue?
This corner right here.
Right.
Uh, this, this is where it, on top, but it doesn't go like that, it goes like. Okay, here's, here's this B C, this is the fence. It jogs in as, um, it jogs in, let's say, four feet. This is the back of the vehicle, this, and the fence goes straight across, it jogs in, this is showing it.
Alright, uh, let's, we gotta sit, this is what we're gonna do. I wanna pass it by the board quick, but what we need to do, I believe this is your problem, not the fence, you could put a fence on the property corner, but we gotta show the.
Well, no, it's, the letter.
This doesn't mean it's ten feet.
Okay, that's the, that's your problem, not the fence.
But this doesn't mean it either.
No, it's a fence, you could put your fence on your property, this is a wall.
Okay, but this was a fence, this whole thing.
A fence and a wall is different.
Okay, well, he said apparently, they, when I asked.
Once you're over six feet.
Over six feet, he said you gotta pull a permit, you're done with six, I said, this whole thing is eight feet. It always was, all you was told, and post stuff that we hear.
Alright, why, why don't you, just, I get what you're saying, let's sit back there. Alright, according to the violation. Uh, according to the violation, apparently, it's, the fence is over seven feet and in, in height, and encloses an outdoor assembly seating area. So my, my research has not. So, the inspector's saying he has not identified any permits, so zoning board approval for this construction of the site, plan provided by you proves that the structure within a few, a few of the rear property line, your property is in violation with the Wareham Zoning Board. Then he goes that, and he goes on, and then you say remedy, you must immediately remedy the violation by removing the unlawful structure or make application to the board for, for a variance.
The thing is, the thing is, we, we did have a permit, and they did sign off on the permit.
Alright, I know, but let me, I mean, let me say so on. This is what before us.
What's that?
This is what's before us, not a permit.
Oh, okay.
So if you have permit from the border health, let me finish, you get your turn. If you have a border health permit, building permit, all this, this is not what before us, we're here for a violation. I wanna pass it by the board, but the way I see it, we're not sure what's the violation. You highlight this, I believe your violation is here, so we're not sure, so we need more. Uh, this is not gonna happen tonight, I'm not ready to vote for it, we need more solid identification of the violation by an engineer, by a surveyor, by the, by the building inspector. But, I, I, that being said, I wanna start, this one is Chris, I wanna start by Chris.
So, so what I see from this letter from the commissioner, obviously it's seven foot high, the enclosed area, it's an outdoor seating area, it looks like you have a little band canopy in there?
Yeah.
Oh, that's the opposite end of what we're talking about, the violation, I could show you the pictures that I just took.
Alright, let's see, pass it to everybody, start by Richard, please.
I don't have correspondence.
You don't have a copy of this?
I don't have that.
Start by Mr. Sample, start over there, please.
Thing is, like, I don't know why that's highlighted, but this is where I'm missing on that corner, which is.
It's, um, the third page in on the one with the paper.
Right here.
Okay, why, I know the building, start by Richard, please. One at a time, it's gotta go on record, one at a time. Alright, excuse, excuse me, excuse me. Listen, just show the picture, discuss, discussion has to be public. Just show the picture and we can discuss when you're on your seat. Alright. Alright, okay, just show them the pictures and let's sit down back there and discuss.
Okay.
Alright, I see that.
Mr. Chairman, um, I think it's gonna be, I think I agree with you that we're gonna need to continue, and I think we're gonna need to request pictures like this, similar to this, and maybe more, to be added to the file.
You could do a site visit as well.
I got about twenty pictures of the whole thing.
Alright, let's, let's finish, it's enough discussion, keep showing and sit back, please.
That's interesting. Mr. Buckland had something to say too.
Yeah, one second, let him finish. Alright, yes, Ken?
I, this may be appropriate to have a site visit with the building commissioner, um, and, and toe as well too, because I think the, it goes beyond just a fence replacement, it's a, it's creation of a structure that is for, uh, assembly, that is the issue.
Alright, that's true because it's very confusing, I wanna go back to Chris, Chris, what do you think?
I, I agree, I think I'd like to go see it, and I'd like, uh, more information from the commissioner, the building commissioner, on what exactly is the, is the real issue with this.
Alright, because that fence in the back, I think it's totally legit, the one you highlighted, I think is your problem, that thing with the siding. It becomes a structure, it's seven feet, and it's not a fence, it's six feet. And according to the inspector here, it's becoming a seating area or something, but it's kind, it's confusing to everyone. So definitely a site visit would be appropriate. Veronica, Mr. DeBeneese, what do you think?
Um, I, I agree with the correspondence with the building department, but I didn't actually, I just saw this, it wasn't in my packet originally from the building department. I understand what he's saying about the assembly seating area is what was kind of created. I would be interested in seeing pictures prior to the existing that is now there, uh, if you have any. I did see what you.
We can look.
What you brought, but that would be good.
I'll have to look to see if I got pictures of the existing chain link fence that we took down to where we put the barrier wall.
Okay, and, and so, and then I have one, another question, where did the six-foot fence come in?
It wasn't six foot, they said, I could put a six-foot fence up. When I had an eight-foot fence, so I was taking an eight-foot fence down and replacing it with an eight-foot barrier wall so the kids couldn't climb over the top.
Okay.
A six-foot fence, they, they could get in, I mean, they were getting in.
Anything over six feet fence that needs a variance, just to let you know.
Yeah, I, to understand, um, I, again, I think like, um, Mr. Buckland stated is that the creation of kind of that seating area, and that is what this commissioner is also stating, it's, it's kinda not just replacing a fence, it's creating a barrier for a, um, a different kind of use than was previously in place, I guess. So I'm thinking maybe that might be where the issue is, but I guess we need to be more clear.
The commissioner told me that, that, that corner that I was showing you, that's the problem, that I don't meet the setback by my own, um, plans that I submitted. I said, but they, but this is like after it was all done and signed up, I didn't understand.
No, let me tell you what the commissioner meant, when, when you remove the fence and put that wall, the wall is not a fence, then the wall has to comply with setbacks. Now you call it the fence, once it goes.
It's a structure.
It's a structure, becomes over six feet, becomes a structure, now it needs to meet setback. So, according to the building inspector, I'm gonna ask him, and we're gonna go, hopefully all of us go with him. Either you gotta, I think the setbacks there is, uh, you're commercial to residential, you probably need it twenty feet. So if you wanna keep it seven feet, you're gonna bring it, meet setbacks, or you gotta bring it down to six feet to call it a fence. I think that's what he means by this, and we're, like I said, we're a little confused here. That's why he's saying setback. A fence, you could go in your property with a fence. So, in other words, if you move that wall, make it six feet, and put it right on a property line, you're good.
I, I, I don't know that I agree with that, only because of his terminology and what he's saying, that it's creating, as long as there is seating in that space, and that's what the use of that fence is creating, an outdoor assembly seating area, that's the issue.
Right, exactly right, and so, but this.
So I'm gonna say you can have a picnic table on your property line if you want, touching it, but you can't have a fence encircling that, I guess, well, that's a barrier type.
Let me.
But wouldn't the time for that have been when I was?
Because it's a restaurant, because it's a restaurant.
Okay, you're right. This is what happened, it's, now, this is how it works. That becomes a violation matter, we have nothing to do with it.
You can have the fence if it's six feet or less.
Six feet or less, now, he goes out and put tables, the inspector border health have to go issue violation, that's separate. That, what before us here, we have to be very careful, we, we have a violation on setback because the height. Like I said, he moves at twenty feet, he has no violation, drops it to six feet, he rectifies the violation. However, I wanna recheck myself, and I hope you all do with the commissioner, and clarify this. And that's why we should all visit, if we can, at least two, three of us with the commissioner, we publicly announce it, and go there and see exactly where's the violation, and see what's his theory, and if it matches our theory, and maybe he has a different theory.
Yeah, cause he says and, so it sounds like it's the two things, over seven feet and the assembly area.
Correct. So the assembly, again, it becomes a violation, I think restaurant capacity, right? Ken, I, I, would that violation come to us if he makes seating?
Uh, no, not if it's a, if it's a, um, a, a capacity issue.
Right.
It's a building code issue, then not a zoning board of appeals issue.
Right, so say the fence is six feet, and all of a sudden he has a hundred people extra, that's not our problem. Say, say that's, let's say, let's say he's in compliance with the setback, height, everything, rectify the issue, and all of a sudden he's got tables everywhere, that's not a problem.
The assembly seating area is not a building issue?
It'd be, it'd be, it's a building code issue, not zoning. There's a difference between building code and zoning.
It doesn't change the status of what he's created as a barrier for that purpose?
Well, you go back to the barrier, it becomes a zoning.
So if we cut that barrier down to six feet and made it a fence, and take a chainsaw, cut that thing right down to six feet.
I believe that's the prob, that's, that would be legal. However, I wanna, I want, would like as much as the board to ask the inspector if that's the problem. I believe that's the case because you don't have a roof over it.
No, no roof.
And there's no such rules or code says a fence has to be chain link or a wall with brick or with siding or anything. So this is where this issue is, I believe, because it's over six feet. If the board wishes to give a variance for a fence for seven feet, it automatically be, it doesn't need a variance for setback, you understand, becomes a fence. So if we, if the board said, you know what, I wanna give you a variance for a seven, uh, fence, then he's not in violation with setback because a fence can be to the property line. You get, you get that? You understand that? And again, capacity is building code, there's a difference between building code and zoning. So in other word, just hypothetically speaking, if the building, if we, if we issue the variance or a special permit for a building, and we give him, okay, you could go build it, and the gentleman or the lady who's building this building, uh, the building code says you have to have a twelve-inch beam, and the inspector says you have to have twelve inch, we have no say in this, we, it's not our jurisdiction, the building codes, our restriction's zoning. So seating becomes building code restrict, uh, building code, not zoning.
One of the, Mr. Chairman, in fact, you're absolutely right, but one of the issues here is that with the, uh, the enclosure of this area for assembly, it becomes a structure and not a fence.
Right, but let's, exactly.
Well, this, this, but this definition says that a fence is a structure.
Because it's over six feet.
Over six feet.
Doesn't matter, the height hasn't got anything to do with it.
Well, it, it depends on how you call it a, a fence and a structure as well too, you're, you're saying that if it cuts it down to six, six feet, it. You're, you're saying that if it cuts it down to six, six feet, it would be acceptable. I don't know if that's the case.
Again, if he cuts it down to six feet, we'll have to hear it from the commissioner, it complies as a fence. Now, if he is using it as an assembly, there's a different code violation that he has to bring, come before us. What before us here is the zoning, is height and setback. Like, again, if he increasing the number of seating, that's a different violation. It's gotta be addressed properly with the, with the commissioner, whether it comes to us, or border health, or fire department. You have fire department issues, too. So that, we're not, this is not our problem right now. Our problem is setback and height.
Can, can I make a request of the commissioner?
Yeah, go ahead.
That he explains to us whether or not that fence, because it is used, the way it is to enclose that seating area, is considered a structure?
The assembly area.
So regardless of the height?
Right.
So either-
That could be, that's a question we can ask him.
You see, that, a good question, however, it becomes, it becomes a question of intent. You ask him if the applicant intend to use as a, as a table, as serving, because the wall.
It's how it's being used. It's not, it's-
Right. Well, let's, I don't know if the violation of adding tables is our jurisdiction. That's the thing. Do you get this? So now you, you-
So it sounds like it changes, that the seating changes the, what the fence is considered. So if you had no seating out there, maybe this, this would-
No.
Sounds like it'd be a non-issue, but you have seating there.
It's, it's a violation regarding he has seating or not.
Right. It's the height.
Right. It's the height.
I don't think so.
Uh, but what he, uh, the intention is separate. It's like some, you know, you can't say-
Commissioner needs to make it clear, I guess.
Yes. That's why, I think it's very good to make an appointment with the commissioner. It takes some few minutes for us, and we coordinate the meeting via email, and see what's a good time for everybody. If everybody, like, who is voting on this, definitely Chris, because he's on it, and Richard can come, of course, but he's not voting on it. So we need to go see it and get a real clarification from the commissioner, what we voted on.
I have a couple more questions.
Yes.
Did I hear that this business is not open to the public at the time, right now? Or it is open to the public?
No, it's open to the public right now.
The business is open to the public. What was it, you said that you needed to, to, is it the, um, the outdoor assembly area, is that operational at the moment?
When the, no, that, that area there is, actually, that's used for, like, the people, the cooks and stuff go out and sit there and cool off, or if they smoke, they smoke up there.
Call the shell yard on this plan.
Yeah.
The big area, and if you're looking from the highway to the right.
The small area that you were talking about?
No, what, he's talking-
This big area, this is used as a seating, and I got pictures of that, if you want.
All right.
Oh, no, that's all right. That's my, that's not my, that's not where I'm going with my question.
Okay.
So which one using for recreational, for the, for the employees, waitresses?
This one right here.
This one. Okay, so, because he was looking at this, so that's the one, Jim, he's talking-
And this is outdoors, not indoors?
It's outdoors.
That's, that's the, that's our issue, not this. This is the violation, not this.
This is what, this is what we're-
Exactly.
Did he even have-
I don't, I'm confused.
Right. So if you notice, the violation is in the back, not on the sides, because he meets the setback yet. You know what I'm saying?
Good, all the way around, except for, for the-
But, um, didn't, are you sure that's the area? 'Cause didn't it say it's on the property line? And that is not on the property line. The fence, that the long fence is on the property line.
Well, yeah, I thought he was talking about-
Yeah, 'cause it said something about being on the property line.
This is what Dave was cleaning up, probably missed by 4.3 feet. Is that corner, from my own plan, missed? I said, well, no, only said that when he issued the permit.
No, within a few feet.
When he signed up.
I think we could talk for two hours and not know what we're talking about.
I guess if we ask Dave, that's the best.
Yeah, it does say within a few feet.
We need Dave here?
No, we, we have to-
We go to that site.
We have to visit first.
We need, we need Dave's testimony to make a decision, in my opinion.
Yes.
A second.
Can you guys take your seat back?
I find all this conversation, I listen and read at the same time, and I find our own bylaws very ambiguous. In the notice of violation from the building department, in the middle of this page, it says Article 6, Section 623, special trix, structures, word structures, in the commercial strip zoning district are required to maintain a 10-foot rear and side yard setback. Then, indented with a bullet, is a definition of a structure in the zoning bylaw definition, right out of our bylaws. And it goes on very wordfully, "A combination of materials assembled at a fixed location to give support or shelter, such as a building, trestle, tower, framework, retaining wall, tank, tunnel, tent, stadium, reviewing stand, platform, bin, fence, sign, flagpole, or the like." So by our own bylaw-
If a fence is over six feet-
The guy wants to be a, um, difficult, a fence, according to the, what this is written in our bylaw, needs to have a 10-foot setback. That's what's in writing in our bylaw.
Right. If he keeps it seven feet, if he cuts it six-
It's either poorly written or poorly interpreted.
Right. So this, this here has to go down, if he wants to keep it what it is, with the little corner here, to meet the setback in the back, the 10 feet.
That's a fence. It's gotta have a 10-foot setback.
No, this-
According to this, what it says right here.
He just read it, and yeah, it does.
No, listen, excuse me. He is not talking about this fence. A fence can be on the property line. He's talking about this violation. You know-
I understand, I understand, I agree with you, I'm not disagreeing with you.
The fence in the back, eight feet, the, the chain link, when was that fence installed? That where the people sat on-
Six or seven years ago?
Okay.
Or eight years ago?
I'm just trying to make their situation worse.
No, I'm just trying to do it right.
I, I understand.
Again, the best thing, I believe this is the violation, that room where the waitresses and the cook gather. However, let's meet-
We need to.
That fence, how long it's been there? Eight feet? Eight years?
Eight years, probably.
All right. Check your permit. If you have a permit for that fence, after seven years, it becomes legal. The fence on the right, but your addition is not more than seven years.
No, that was, uh, 18 months.
So that fence in here to the right, if you have it, if you could dig it out and find it, too late now, if you had a permit. So anyway, that being said, let's continue, and we make an appointment with the, with the commissioner.
Couldn't agree more. So moved.
So we have a motion to continue by Jim.
Can I, can I make a request before we do that?
Sure.
Can we hear if there are any public comments?
Yeah, you're right. I'm sorry. Anyone in the public would like to comment in favor or against this project? Yeah, I hear none. Thank you, Veronica. You watching now, huh? All right. So we have a motion by Jim to continue 47-21 to October 13. Do I have a second on that?
My, my motion also includes a meeting on site.
Very good. Motion to include also that publicly we'll be meeting, hopefully, maybe over three people on site, with the building commissioner. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second with Jake. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain. So here's the deal, we'll meet, we'll see on the 13, and in between, I guess, Ken, we have to coordinate with Mr. Aquina to go there, for sure.
Right. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we can get this dialed in. You wanna take the plan, Brooke? No, we got two copies. And I don't know if that's the one, wait a minute, I don't know if that's the one that we drew on, or if we need a different one. We have the one that we were playing with. You want the one that we played with, or do you want the?
All right, very good.
The one that I gave you without that on the cover, doesn't have the whole, doesn't have the letter from the commissioner.
You guys wanna send your stuff back? We got a big crowd in the room waiting for their turn to be heard. Okay, you got the right one, uh-
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next public hearing, 48-21, Joyce Wall, special permit slash variance for 14 North Boulevard. Raise and reconstruct.
Before I start reading, let me put a couple of these to my right, and a few of these to my left. Here you go, buddy. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on September 22, 2021, at 6:30 PM, in Room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 48-21 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 622, and Table 628 and Article 13, Section 1355, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Joyce Wall, care of Samuel Imel?
Hi, Imel.
Imel, sorry, Sam. J.C. Engineering, Inc. of 2854 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, Mass., proposing to raise the existing dwelling and reconstruct a new, single-family dwelling on the same site, located at 14 North Boulevard, Wareham, Mass., that appears on Assessors Map 1, Lot 374, in the Onset Village 2 zoning district.
All right, very good. This matter, Richard Sample will be sitting on it. Okay, sir, you wanna state your name?
Sam Imel with J.C. Engineering.
Okay, and tell us what you're doing.
Uh, sure. Project address here is 14 North Boulevard. We're mapped in the Onset Village 2 District. We have a pre-existing, non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot. The existing house had a, was damaged in a fire back in September 2020. Our client wishes to tear down the existing structure and rebuild within approximately the same footprint. The existing house was one and three-quarters story. We're proposing a two-story home. However, would this property be incited in the flood zone? We do need to elevate that by one story in order to comply with FEMA regulations. We are requesting a special permit for the floor area ratio inside setback, as well as a variance for a small increase in building coverage.
Okay, very good. I see the front setback, required 5.2 feet, existing 6.1, you're proposing 6.1. Sides, existing 2.4, you're going better, 3.5. Rear, 43, you're gonna go down to 32, plenty. It's 10 feet required, you have plenty of room. Building height, 35, you're under 35. Building coverage, 22.6, existing, you're going to 24. And impervious surface, 53 and a half, it's 50% maximum. You already have 53, you're going to 48. And FAR, 25% maximum, you have 28, you're increasing it to 62. All right. So, let me look at it quick. Now, I guess you have a lot of existing, non-conforming issues here.
Right.
Let me see what he says here.
So the whole thing is within the 100-foot coastal beach, beach offset, the entire residence?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I had it upside down, I had it just outside.
All right.
I got it now.
All right. According to the building inspector, the FAR ratio requires a special permit, replacing of the structure, special permit. The zoning board of appeals, and if, like I said, this is an existing, non-conforming, one of these things. It's a non-conforming, he's increasing the non-conformity in certain areas, certain areas he's lower in it. If the board feels that, that's not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, we could act under 1355 as a special permit. So that being said, we start by, who'd I say, sir, on this? We start by Richard. Richard, what do you think?
Um, I, I did go by the property, and I could see that it's a little tight in that neighborhood. Even the house to the left, if you look at the front of it, I think his setback is the same as the other guy, right?
Right, right.
Right? And you're just gonna be raising it up to the flood zone?
Correct, yep.
And you're just increasing your every hour by an awful lot, but it looks like there's a house right next, two houses down, that takes up its whole property.
Right, yeah. The, um, the first story will be a drive-under garage, which is considered in the floor area ratio, which is why that's so high.
Yeah.
But won't be living space. It'll be used as a garage and storage, so it's essentially two, two stories of living space. Thank you.
Jake?
Well, I've, nothing wrong with, I like this project. That's it.
Chris?
I don't have any issues with the project.
Veronica?
Um, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So I'm seeing that you have these purple outline on the map of what you're proposing to put, but I'm not clear on what's actually existing with this drawing.
Sure. So it's almost an identical footprint of the existing building. However, on the northern property line, you can see it, it bumps out. We're pulling it back by approximately one foot.
The grayish is the existing, the, the pink is proposed.
I'm-
The side setback, the north side, it's right now 2.4 feet. He's proposing 3 and a half feet, so he's making it better by four, something, 13 inches.
Um-
No. Is it? Yeah, 13 inches.
Well, I'm, I'm confused here, because this- So in this drawing, where you have your existing, which is light gray-
Correct, yep.
It appears that it dies into that purple. So is that purple extending it out to the right by that? Is that gray, would that have continued on to a straight line?
The-
If you know where, I don't, if you can see what I'm talking about. The, um, if you're looking at your map here-
Yes.
You have this gray area where you're showing where this existing was.
Correct.
And it stops right here.
Right. At that point, it bumps back into where the magenta line, and then they're gonna basically follow the same footprint from that point on. Does that make sense?
No, because, so there's a bump out here that creates that, that the existing structure is creating this little bump out, just like that, and follows the purple, or does it go there and come down and create a line that would go like this?
Can I explain to you?
Um-
That makes sense.
I'm sorry, I'm a-
You could just maybe answer that, 'cause, so right here. Now, do you see what I'm asking?
Right, no.
Here.
No, this is existing, all the shaded.
If you follow the dash gray lines.
All this existing. So he's taking it down, go back to the existing, adding these stairs, adding these stairs, and make it better here. So, you understand?
So this, I'm asking, though, if this actually does this here, because why is, why would there be six inches here and then a jog?
Yeah, the, the house must jog.
The house does jog, the existing house does jog at that point, yes.
Existing house jogs like that. That's what he's saying.
Did the existing house have like a porch on that end of it, or something, that was event, that started out as a porch and then get closed or something? That's why it jogged?
Uh, yeah, the fr, the front of the house, I believe, was a, almost like an enclosed porch, but got converted to living space.
Started out as a three-season, and then they put glass, and then it became, yeah, I get it. That's why the jog.
If I, if I may, so the purple is the, is going to be the new structure?
Proposed, correct.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
So I have a question about the existing that's there. Are you gonna be using any of the foundation that's there right now? You're raising this up. Is anything gonna be used?
I don't believe so, no. I don't believe the condition of the foundation's structurally sound to, to build on.
So why aren't you moving the structure over so that it conforms?
Less disturbance to already, an already disturbed area would be. Less disturbance to an already disturbed area would be rebuilding in the same footprint, so disturbing less area on the site.
But you're gonna be putting in pilings, right? It's not gonna be like... I mean, I understand what you're saying, but this is an opportunity, in my mind, to actually have a structure conform, because nothing is gonna be reused that's there. It's gonna all be redone. So, in my mind, I would like to see this moved over a little bit, not... I mean, I know you've moved it over a foot, I'd actually like to see it moved over even further, because I don't see any reason why it's not.
Chair, if I may speak?
Go ahead.
One of the reasons I see, if this was my house, is they don't have enough room for parking, they only have parking to park maybe one or two vehicles, by the looks of it, underneath, they need more room to park under there. So, that would be a reason, that's why most houses in that area are kind of offset, so they have more parking on the side.
That makes sense.
They do not have parking in the front.
I see the gravel in the picture.
I agree, however, you're creating parking because it's raised up. He just said it's gonna be used for parking, so now you're gonna have parking underneath and the gravel driveway to the side.
Exactly, is what I just said. But usually, two spots isn't enough, you know, when you have friends or family come over, that's why all the houses in Onset are usually offset for extra parking.
They got parking wards down that neighborhood.
Yes.
They sure do have parking.
Well, that's my opinion, I would really like to see this moved over so that it's more conforming, and that's...
That's your opinion, yeah. And you're sticking to it.
If you look at these pictures, you see the jog, Veronica, right here? See, that's the jog.
That's my opinion.
Anyway, where were we? Jimmy?
I'm all set, I'm good with this plan.
Could I make a motion to close?
Well, let's see the public. Anyone in the public want to speak in favor of this project? Anyone wanna speak against? I hear none. Would you like to add something?
Yeah, if this does get approved, can I request that the approvals? We have two years to act upon those approvals. We do still need to go to conservation with this, and our client does live out of state, so we expect a little time to get started.
Well, if the board treat it as a special permit, it's already two years.
Okay.
If the board says it's a variance, then it's only one year.
Thank you.
I mean, who knows? If we have another COVID or a virus, you might come here and extend, or the state automatically extends like they did. All right. You guys wanna add anything on this?
Jake made a motion to close, I second it.
Nope, that's okay.
Yeah, motion, okay, second by Jim. All in favor to close, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's all closed. Now, that's the wishes of the board.
Let's make a motion to approve as presented.
All right, one second, before we go forward, one second. One second, one second, please. Let me go back to the letter.
We wanted to determine a special permit as well.
Right, if we want...
We have to make a decision whether it's special permit or variance.
Exactly, or a variance, right.
Do you wanna change your motion to...
Yeah, to make it a special permit?
Well, you wanna see if you wanna proceed as a... You wanna make your motion, if you wanna proceed as a special permit?
I'd like to make a motion to proceed as a special permit.
I'll second that.
All right, second by Jim, discussion on that.
I'm in agreement that I think the raising of the structure and putting it back is not a detriment to the neighborhood, but I think the neighborhood could be improved in this situation by moving it over, not necessarily to ten-foot setback, but further, and I would suggest that the board recommend that he move the structure over a few more feet, actually. Why not improve the neighborhood when we have the opportunity? We have so many that come before us where we're really stuck, but nothing's being reused here. Everything's being taken out completely, there's gonna be added parking for the applicant, and I don't see a reason why this board wouldn't try and move more toward following the bylaws that are before us.
I do understand, but he only gets seventeen feet. If he parks one car, two small cars to be next to each other, there's no room. If he moves five, six feet, he can fit, if he out, he can put a Chevy. That's how it looks.
He's not making the building smaller, why would he... He's not making his building smaller, right?
The building, no, it's not smaller, but if he moves it, like you said, it's very crucial for him on his driveway. His driveway is only right now maybe twelve feet. How much you gonna crunch it?
What you're saying is what he gains by being able to park under, he loses on his side parking by moving the building.
If he moves the building, it was... And like Jake said, if he has a... In the summer, that's a waterhouse, apparently he's gonna have gathering, where are they gonna park?
How wide is the driveway?
Right now, can you scale it, Sam? Please, it looks like twelve feet to me.
As he's got it drawn, you could put two cars in the driveway and one under the house, get three off-street. As you're proposing, you could get one car off-street.
So, yeah, approximately twelve feet wide.
Approximately twelve feet wide, the driveway?
And how wide is our standard driveway?
Twelve feet.
What standard driveway?
Ten to twelve feet.
A standard driveway, oh, standard is ten to twelve, so pardon me if I just verify this.
Find a name, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
The street is very narrow, and so if he has anybody over and they park in the street, he's gonna... The people can't even get around it.
That's true.
And the house that's to the left of him is identical to it, so, I mean, they...
If I may speak, Chair, as well? I mean, if you have a boat, anything, a lot of people have boats in that neighborhood, camper stuff, you need extra room and buy right, I think. I just don't see there's that this is a problem.
It makes sense, yeah.
Okay, well, that's... I guess that's my opinion, doesn't sound like the rest of the board is in agreement, but I've given it.
I mean, you gotta keep in mind, the slot is only fifty feet wide, and the back thirty-eight...
I see Veronica's point, but... And I respectfully disagree, because I think any time we have an opportunity to allow people in that area to create more off-street parking...
We encourage it.
We kind of should. And what you're proposing, if I'm interpreting it correctly, is you're actually reducing off-street parking. So, I get your point about getting the setback, to get this distance between properties, but I think that there's a lot to be gained by being able to get multiple vehicles off the street and on this property. I think that's got much more merit, in my opinion, and you have yours.
Well, I agree kind of with Veronica, too. It would be nice if it was a conforming piece of property, and if you move the whole building back, you got thirty-two feet behind you, if you move the whole... You got a ten-foot... You have ten-foot setback in the back, you'd have twenty-two feet more in the front, and you could put parking in the front.
Is it sewer, or is there...
It's town sewer, yes.
That's town sewer.
I understand what Chris is saying, but then you lose a backyard.
I thought that the issue was parking.
Keep in mind, this property, how many square feet? It's thirty-nine-hundred square feet. You're asking the world from thirty-nine-hundred square feet. The whole land is thirty-nine-hundred square feet. I mean, moving it five feet here or here, you're gonna kill it.
I don't know, I disagree. You could have a ten-foot driveway, this still has a couple of feet before it moves over, and as Chris said, you could move it back, but I... You know, I don't know, that's just my opinion in this.
Is our next step to make a motion to approve as presented?
You can.
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion to approve as a special permit by Jake?
Seconded by Jim.
Seconded by Jim, all in favor, say aye.
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 Deny.
Chris?
I'm not on the... I'm not on this one.
It's Richard.
Richard's on this one.
Fourteen... Oh.
Aye.
Sorry, okay, aye, I guess it carries. Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought that was Chris. So, I guess it carries. Four?
One, zero.
So, four, one, zero. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, don't go anywhere, let's sign these things and do them properly. So, I guess we're missing...
Send things back, let's get this written up.
Missing the signature page, Ken, for... Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sam.
Missing that signature page for the marijuana, for the trava.
Yeah.
So, if whoever sat on this, that's Chris sat on this, if you guys go by the plan, by town plan, sometimes when, what's her name, Sonia emails us, it's ready to sign?
Well, you can do it electronically as well, too.
Oh, yeah.
Because we voted, right?
Okay, yeah, yeah. So, see, that's a plus.
Just an email will do it, then.
All right.
Sir? Any conditions on that one we just voted on, standard findings?
Standard conditions? Gentlemen, sir, are you here for something?
We have to get a watch, I have to wait and see if I'm getting on board.
Ah, okay. All right, yeah, thank you. You need to ask question or anything, or you're good?
No, last time, communication I had was I was supposed to be here from the...
So, are you Mr. Troy?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah, last time, you wanna come forward, state your name for the record? Troy Larson, right?
Before you get distracted.
I remember, yeah. So, I... So, last time, I know you came here, the selectmen wanted publicly, and the last time, also, we discussed with the board member, they would like to know a bit more about you, do you have a resume, you could tell the board more about yourself? What made you decide to go on the board? Although, it's not a decision, but we have to recommend it or not.
Yeah, well, I mean, I've been in town for three years, and I wanted to get a little more involved in, you know, talking to people in town. They suggested that I get involved with the boards, and this seemed like a proper board for me, I'm a Realtor, so I've assumed I'd probably learn a lot and get some good insight.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand that you came to the board, the meeting had closed and I had left, and I guess you spoke to the rest of the people, I apologize, I didn't know that...
Oh, no worries.
I just wanted to make that clear, that I didn't run out on you.
No problem.
I didn't know what was going on, thank you.
So, what are you doing, residential, commercial, everything in the real estate business?
Everything, yeah.
Whatever they'll pay you to do?
Whatever they'll pay me to do.
If you get a commission, you'll do it?
Well, mostly.
Mostly?
Yeah.
I mean, that's a fair answer.
How you see the town should go ahead, how you see... How do you see it in your head, like in your mind, how you think it should be?
Well, I mean, I came from Brockton. I had family growing up down here, that lived down here, my grandfather lived in Onset, and I had relatives that had places on Swift Beach, so we've been down here summering for years. I think it's a great little town. I mean, coming from Brockton, it's a completely different world.
Right.
And I like the community. I'd just like to see what I could do to help it and enhance it.
All right, very good. Did you... Did you had... You guys signed that and give it back? Did you guys... Did you had like a little resume written for the office up there, that we could look?
You filled out an application.
Other than saying...
Yeah, I filled out the application online.
Okay. You guys wanna ask some questions? Did you guys look at the resume online? Did you look at it, Veronica?
I haven't seen it.
They'll throw it out. Behind your name put either nay or... It didn't abstain, you voted.
Did you look at the resume? Did you look at his gentleman's resume?
No, I did not, sir.
Jake?
I did not see it.
All right, Chris, did you look at the resume?
I didn't see a resume.
All right.
Anyone willing to join the board is good with me.
Oh, you assigned that.
I wish that they would let us bring a new associate member on the board and let them come and participate in a few meetings, and then ask for our recommendation, whether they stay or go. And I don't mean that in any deference to you, but, you know, you got... You're a guy with a black mask and an orange shirt. And, you know, are you... You know, and I'm not being a... I don't mean it in disrespect, you know?
No, I get it.
If you were a known commodity, if, you know, there's certain people in town that everybody seems to know them, whether they're a pain in the ass, or whether they're an asset to the town, everybody seems to know them. So, you've either managed to keep your mouth shut, or you haven't erred the right people.
I don't get involved in the stuff on stage, but I look at it, but I don't comment.
Do you mind privately give you... Give me your phone number?
Sure.
Also to the board, like, if you could write that down, because you don't wanna give it publicly?
Someone's missing.
Who's missing?
I think everybody has to sign.
If you could just write it down and your name, and you could just pass it to the board? Tory Larson, right?
Oh, six?
There's only six of us.
Oh, right.
That's why we need him.
Yeah.
I might give you a phone call tomorrow or so, we could talk?
Sure.
Okay, that's the phone number for you guys all, for Tory, if you like...
Done. Any papers from that last hearing that need to come back to me for the folder?
Smarter than me writing it, right?
Naz, you got any papers from that last hearing that need to go back in the folder?
One thing, because I... Before I lose my talent on the phone. Okay, here it is.
That's the gentleman's phone number, if you'd like to talk to him, we don't wanna say it publicly. I didn't want to pass it to everyone.
Troy Larson, we don't wanna say his name on the... We don't wanna put his phone number on?
Oh, it's Troy, not Tory, Troy.
Yep.
You guys already handed your paperwork back from the... And Naz is sitting on one there, can you just give me that over there?
Yeah, thanks.
Now, we can put this to bed and stop fussing over it.
You're gonna put all those in there?
This is for the... For Shanigan, it's good for everybody. Somebody has this, so when we go to the meeting, you have it? I have one, who would like it when we go to a meeting?
Anybody want from Shanigan's? If you don't want it, I'll put it in the folder.
All right, very good, so I... We'll take it into consideration, I think, and next time, hopefully, we'll vote on it. Sorry for delay, but we have to do some due diligence.
No worries.
All right, and definitely would love to have you on board, so we'll definitely advise.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thanks for being... Thanks for sticking to it and keeping...
No worries, thank you.
Eventually...
You learned? Do you learn something? Did you learn?
I'm here talking about fences.
Good.
Yeah, but we're not done talking about fences.
Again, why is already?
I'm not done talking about fences, 'cause I don't quite get that, the rule, the way it's written, a fence can be...
As we said back, yeah.
It's not over seven, six feet tall, so as it goes over six feet...
Our written document says fences have gotta be ten feet from the property line.
Yeah. That's what I took it as, too, yeah.
After it goes over six feet.
No, it said fence.
About six feet. Our written document says fences have to be ten feet from the property line.
No, no, what are you guys discussing?
Fences.
No, 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 don't... You can't discuss this.
It's still an open meeting.
No, you can't discuss that matter.
You're not in a public hearing.
What's that? What's that?
You're not in a public hearing. You cannot discuss it, please.
You continue the public hearing till the next time.
So you cannot discuss...
We're not talking that, I'm not talking about fence, the Shanigan's fence. I'm talking about fences, period.
I don't think it's a good idea. After we close, we talk.
I'll be quiet.
Thank you. All right, uh, all right, yeah, here's the thing. Uh, here's the thing. Uh, we have, again, selectmen ask us about the decision, so we have, hard or not, easy or not, and you guys got to have favors. We have to decide. Richard or Chris?
I, I got a comment to make on that. I was at the SOA bylaw committee meeting and I mentioned this. Uh, we were having a discussion about another member on that board and it came down to two people. And Mr. Muniz, uh, selectman Muniz, said that they, that he didn't see any recommendation from our board at all. And that we could recommend, that you could recommend they choose between either one of us. And he says it's happened before and then they make the decision.
Right, that's what they want us to do.
But he said that they didn't receive, I guess, from our last meeting or the meeting that you mentioned before that you were going to send them a note saying let them decide whether it's Richard or me?
They want the recommendation. We said no recommendation. This was our answer, no.
Okay.
It's not like we ignored them.
Oh, okay.
We said no, not...
We both you, so we said no.
Right.
He said that you could recommend both of us and then they would decide. So we didn't, so you guys didn't have to decide between each one?
We hate you both equally.
That's the problem. They want us to pick a person, unfortunately. Uh, we can, we could say we recommend both of you and learn to decide too if you guys, I mean, this is not your choice or, Richard. If Veronica, Jim, myself and Jake would like to say we recommend both and see what it takes us, we could do this. So I would like to hear a motion from any board. We got to start with the mo, and discussion first.
I think we remain in limbo, that, like that gentleman that's coming that wants to be named to the board as an alternate member. The selectmen probably feel, well, you have two alternate members. You need to move one from alternate to, to create the vacancy. You have a vacant full member position. Who do you want to be a member? And, and who do you want to remain as an alternate member?
I think regardless, you know, member or alternate, I think it's, we're all very important on this board because, you know, all of us take, sometimes someone goes on a vacation or someone gets sick, so it's always good to have extra people, so whether you're an alternate or a regular member, you're all, it's all just as important.
And input is, is equally weighted. We don't, doesn't matter. So, um...
Yes.
I, I'll, nothing far or against either party. If I was forced to choose simply because Richard has a construction background and, and has to deal with this stuff in the past and then I, I would, I would lean that way. Nothing against, you know, how do you, how do you make a decision? Flip a coin? Oh, heads this guy, tails that guy. Whether the basis of my decision is correct or incorrect, I'd lean towards Richard if they were looking for, just because of his experience in the, in, um...
You don't have to explain.
Pardon me?
You don't have to explain.
So, you know, if you want to make a norm, if you want a motion, I'll make a motion and I'll move to recommend Richard.
Okay, I have a motion by Jim to recommend Richard. I have a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Jake. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't think we had any discussion from the rest of the...
Discussion, go for discussion.
You're very right. I, I withdraw the, the counting. Discussion.
So one thing that I would say, um, I think we've seen and had enough meetings and projects come before us to get a feel for, um, each, each pers, uh, Richard and Chris, both.
Both.
So I would say it's my opinion, looking at the two and looking at our board in general, that we, you have liberal thought processes and conservative thought processes. And I think it's important that every board has a good balance. And if I were to look at all of the board members in general, the existing board members, I would say that we are a liberal board at the moment. I would say I'm probably one of the conservative voices if anybody else would agree with this. I don't know. But I think that it's important to have a balance. And I think that Chris would be more, is more of a conservative, um, opinion, I think, discussing projects, which I think, um, is needed on the board. Richard has great input and it's not about... Well, it is about what, who I think would be better suited for this particular board. If we had three conservative board members, um, I wouldn't be looking to choose a conservative applicant. I would be looking more for a liberal applicant. But in this situation, I feel like I'm probably the only conservative person on the board. And I think that Chris would add, um, another conservative person to the board. So my recommendation would be for Chris.
All right.
Can I ask what the difference on this board is liberal and conservative? Why am I being put as a liberal?
I was gonna say that.
I mean, how, how, how am I determined as a liberal? That I don't, we're all individuals. We're all individuals here. We shouldn't be a liberal or a conservative or whatever it is. It's all about, if you feel someone's important for this, then that's where your vote goes. All that other liberal and con, conservative talk doesn't do anything for this board whatsoever. And I'm not, please do not put me under a liberal, uh, listing.
Just my opinion, Richard. You could, you may not feel that you're liberal. I, I don't feel the same.
That's exactly right. Let's not argue over it. You can make your opinion. No arguing back and forth. That being said, anyone else would like to discuss?
I think Richard would make a great Democrat.
No, please do not. Let's not go there, please.
I'm just joking.
Uh, that being said, we go back on the vote. So we have...
Can I ask you?
Yes.
The selectman is making the final decision or are we making the decision?
The selectmen. So they might come back, say, no, that's what we want. Okay? So that being said, let's go back to the vote. So we have a motion. Was it Jake or Jim made the motion?
Another question.
Yes, ma'am.
More discussion.
Um, so, I, I don't know if Ken, if you know what this process is, but what are they going to be looking at? Are they going to be looking at the, how we were coming to, to the determination?
No, they're going to take your recommendation probably at face value and, and make the appointment as, as you call out.
Okay, because it's like we're ready to like vote on something.
Not, that's not necessary. They're gonna call, go in our recommendation. Keep in mind, they could say, no, we want the other way. Whoever, we, we haven't decided.
Okay, but they're going to listen to the whole thing. I just, obviously because I would like my voice to be heard on what I would like.
Yeah.
Just like everybody wants to.
I mean, I'm sure they're gonna listen to that because they'll decide. So are we done discussion?
Well, I think, I think Veronica has a right to have her voice heard and I think the evening that the selectmen make this decision, she should, um, be apprised and have the opportunity to go and speak to them if she's that passionate.
I agree.
Okay, I just, I just add that to the record. That's, you know...
Can I ask not to be put in the conversation that I'm a liberal?
I think that's a fair request.
Thank you very much.
I, I can't, I can't say that I won't say my opinion.
This is not our board. She could go say whatever she wants. And the board can say, I mean, they could label us, label you, label me, him, him, whatever they want. This is, this is not getting discussed here. The other board, we don't speak for them. So let's go back to our vote. So Jim made a motion that he recommends Richard. I have a second by Jake. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Denied.
Denied. Say an abstain. So it carries two, one, one. Okay, they could take it on that. All right, that being said, let's go on to any other business. We signed the E, the E signature. Okay, let's make a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay, before we adjourn?
Yep.
Um, I've, I've been on the, the SOA bylaw committee.
Good idea. I'm sorry we should have discussed this.
Okay, let me put this down so we can discuss.
And, um, we, we've had two meetings. Uh, we had, our meetings are on the, um, second and fourth Wednesday of the month from three to five. We've, um, made Nancy McHale the, um, chairman. We voted her as the chairman of the board. And Charles Schultz from the, um, planning committee, he's going to be the clerk. At the first meeting, we did an introduction of members. We went around the room and, um, all introduced ourselves and, and how we felt we would be on the board. I'm representing the ZBA, so I'm leaning more towards all the variances and the special permits and that type of stuff, um, with it, with input. We had another meeting today. Uh, we talked about Wareham being a, a green community. And, uh, we want to keep that status, I guess, as a, as a green community, so we have to be careful exactly what we do, uh, within our bylaws to make sure that, that we stay in, in, uh, the green community status. Jackie, uh, from the assessors department, she went over a little bit about, um, the revenue that the town, um, takes in from some of these SOA projects. Uh, we have, uh, planned to go and look at a couple of arrays that are already out there, SOA arrays. Um, one of them, I think, is on Charge Pond Road, uh, Blue Wave, I think it is. I don't, I don't know if you're familiar with that one?
It's a big one, yeah.
And then there's another one that we're gonna go look at that's maybe not so good, and I'm not sure if that's the one on Toby Road. Uh, we haven't really, uh, decided which ones we're, we're gonna go look at. We've gotten homework to, to go look at all the other towns, uh, in the neighborhood, take a look at their, uh, their bylaws and what they've put in their bylaws. Um, specifically the towns that are more closer to us in size and, um, and shape and all that.
All right, that's good, that's good. Go ahead, sorry.
And there, there was another comment about like slimlining the process and not having two boards, uh, review the process, the zoning board and the planning board, maybe just have one board, be in control of the process to kind of sl, slimline it. And, um, also other discussion about trying to, um, you know, as a, as a right, SOA, uh, people can put solar in their houses and, and whatnot as a right that, and, and, and that, nobody seems to be doing that and, and why. So we talked a little bit about more incentives too. Um, so, so we've just started the discussion. We've got a lot of homework to do. There's a lot of reading to do. And, um, so I guess my concern is what, what would you guys like me to bring, um, to the meeting? Um, I can do updates like this on, on what we've discussed.
Can, can we join the meetings ever? Is there, is it open to the public?
Yep.
Okay, cool.
You, you can go to the meeting, um...
I'm, I'm interested in some SOA stuff for sure.
So, yeah, it's three to, three to five on the second and fourth Wednesday of the month.
Okay.
And it's in room 27 over at the town hall.
I'll be asking you before then.
All right, speaking about having two boards, for some reason, uh, now, this is how it works. It's, I think it's a planning board permit. However, if it needs a variance of any sort, there's no, nobody, the town cannot make a decision. It's, it's a planning board regardless. The state law makes you go for a variance, you go to zoning. But the town could say if it's by right, planning board, it's much better one board instead of two boards. I don't like to personally, two boards, conflicts and stuff. But it's definitely if it needs a variance, has to come for, before the zoning in this town and every other town. That's not a town's, uh, decision on that. If it, if it meets requirements, stays a planning. I agree with this one board. Uh, it does make a lot of revenue. I like this. But again, as I said, and said in the front beginning, I believe it's taken up a lot of commercial, a lot of industrial, a lot of residential. I am for it if you could make, if the conservation could be lenient somehow, make it on the cranberry bogs and the dikes on the bogs. In remote area, maybe some narrow road in the middle of nowhere that could never be developed.
Have you guys seen down 58, what they've done?
Yeah, that's, that was another one that was brought up today at the meeting to take a ride down there and look at...
They, they put, they put thousands of telephone poles on the, on all the cranberry bogs, thousands of them. And they're, they're doing it all over because now they can still pick the cranberry bogs and it's still a farm.
And so are they putting panels on those telephone poles?
Yes, yes.
So they're racism, so the rain...
I was wondering if that was...
So how does a sudden grow the berries and ripen the berries if they're under shade?
It's, it, exactly. There, it's, who knows?
It's a technicality to get, to approve it.
Because they still pick it every year.
People say they're gonna grow cranberries under it, but you know damn well they're not. I think that the...
I like the idea. I think it's great. I think the cranberry industry is failing around here, so...
If they could use telephone poles to get it up off the ground to pass it and they could put them there, then I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. If, if it flies with conservation, let it fly.
I just feel somebody's trying to blow smoke up my derriere saying that you're gonna grow cranberries underneath SOA.
It is for sure. It, it is for sure, but the cranberry guys aren't making any money, so I think they're just trying to find...
We, we do have someone on the board, Linda, um, Rinta, Rin, Rinta?
Oh, yeah.
Linda Rinta, she's a grower.
Yeah, she is. She is a grower and she's, she's actually very knowledgeable and she's been trying to get solar in, in her farm. And so she is representing like the farm community and it's more of a, a low scale, like for the smaller farmers and, um, for them to be able to also subsidize their, their, uh, cranberry industry, uh, with, with the SOA to help them. And, and so that's part, kind of the thing that we're, that they were trying to do, you know, combine, you know, the farmers, make it, make it good for everybody, you know, and, and all the residents and, um...
I, I, I got some comments about the poles. Or some, maybe some questions, maybe they're not comments. I've seen conversations on social media that the materials, the chemicals used to treat the poles to make them, um, sustainable in the ground, pressure treating, et cetera, is a carcinogen. Or it's, it's dangerous. I, I did some reading and I, I read the words may and, and could and all that, but not absolute. I don't know. I don't know if the, if it, I know that every telephone pole up and down the highway is treated the same way.
Not, not anymore. All the new, all the new stuff, they don't have the Creosote that they used to.
No, it's not Creosote. It's not Creosote they're talking about. It's the green stuff. It's something copper. I forget. It's CCA, uh, C...
You can put anything in as a telephone pole. You put metal in the ground, you could put protect, there's very many different ways you could...
Well, I have to say something.
I was wondering how it would affect the water in the cranberries.
I don't think they're gonna harvest that crop. It's just a way to get away conservation, which is fine. This is conservation issues, not else.
I looked at, I, I, I questioned, I know that if you're not in Ocean Spray A pool, the B pool is probably treading water, but the A pool is making money. If you're an independent grower in the cranberry business in this area right now today...
You're dying.
It's costing you $35 an acre to make cranberries and you're selling them for $18. It's costing you $35 a barrel to make an $18 product. You, you're losing, I, I, my numbers aren't accurate, but you get my point.
You're pretty close. You're pretty close, Jim.
I've always said a cranberry bog is, you're not creating, you're not cut, people are
Not clear cutting?
Very upset about clear cutting trees and woods, et cetera, et cetera. So I do find, so I, you know, to bring back to your committee, I do find, I find merit in trying to put SOA panels in bogs. I think that there's some kind of language. I've talked with bog owners and asked the question, why can't you just, I didn't think of wooden pylons. Why couldn't you use, you know, I guess galvanized wouldn't be a good idea. Why couldn't you put concrete pylons in the bog and make SOA fields in cranberry bogs? And I was told they're considered a wetland and, and you can't do it in a wetland. I've also been told, just, you know, all of what I'm saying is not substantiated. It's just, you know, hearsay or, uh, he say. But I've also been told that, um, SOA panels are considered a commercial enterprise and, and the land then should become taxed as commercial property, not as, in, in an agricultural exemption. So I think that there is, going back to Richard's comments about the, they surely could, they, they surely could, would and will reap some amount of crop if, if that could keep them in the 61A, um, tax bracket, but I think...
So is that something that we...
That's my point. I think that...
Have a ability to...
If, if we're gonna, if we're gonna look at this, let's, if, if we, if we're gonna say as a town, yeah, sure.
Recategorize that property?
Put them in cranberry bogs. Um, don't put, don't put arsenic in the bog or don't put, you know, don't put something in the groundwater that's gonna make our wonderful town water worse.
So, but in, in terms of taxes though, Jim, you're bringing up a good point. What is, how do we...
It has to go, they'll go back five years and re-tax them.
They gotta pay back.
So, so...
When you take out a 61A.
So would it...
Said that as commercial now, and let's say it used to be 100 a year, now 1,000, they charge $5,000 and go forward.
Who, is it up to the town to retake that property out of the farm?
As an owner, you, you have to go to the town and say, may I? The town now has 120 days, I think it is, to say, we'll take, we'll, the, the town has the first right of refusal. And then the person that's saying, may I, has to pay retroactively what the taxes were.
So is this a bylaw in our town that if it does have the SOA panel put in, it becomes re...
It's not just our town. It's the whole state of Massachusetts.
Federal.
Federal, so it's...
61A.
Yeah.
If I have a cranberry bog, I want to sell it for the SOA.
Yeah.
For $100,000. I go, the selectmen have the right to buy it for $100,000. Or they say, no, we're not interested. Then I have the right to go sell it for $100,000. My taxes were 100, now becomes 1,000. The assessor, go back five years and charge 5,000, it becomes a commercial or industrial or whatever. They're gonna classify it. That's how it works. Going back to the pillars, why they don't do concrete because they drive them in with compression. They cannot go dig over there and do foundations and stuff.
So that's why they move driven piles?
Yeah, driven, exactly.
You can, but you can drive other than wood. I, I, I'm here, I'm, I don't know if it's true...
Drive copper, a hundred granite, if, each...
What I'm seeing, what I'm asking, what I'm asking our ambassador or whatever, or whatever your official title is, but what I'm asking is, is it or is it not harmful to our groundwater supply? If it's not harmful to our groundwater supply, I am 100% behind allowing cranberry growers...
If you're driving down the highway, thousands of poles everywhere, if they were that bad for the environment, they would be sticked in, because that, those poles still get down into our groundwater as well.
I know, but when they grind up a highway and they, and they...
Sorry, my, 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 my mic was off, sorry.
The re-ground highway is considered hazardous material too, even though they pave thousands of miles. So I don't know. I, I'm saying I don't know and that's why I'm asking, I, you know, as a, as a committee, if you'd, you know, look at that section.
I did see that on, on one of Wareham Adders or Wareham Chat is one of those. I did see, see talk about that.
So bottom line, you can't eat the pie and have it too. So either you want SOA to help the environment at a cost, maybe, but the poles saying, Jake saying it's not detriment. I'm sure it's somehow detrimental to the water, but it's the nature of the beast. You, you don't want a gas, you don't drive a car, drive a bike, but apparently we all need cars. Uh, you don't want houses, don't cut the trees, yeah, we can live in a tent. So everything come at a price. Compromising, let the professional decide on the water. Our recommendation personally, his recommendation, check the water. My recommendation, we have to really, really think for the future, for the industrial and commercial land and residential. Now, going back to this, we, again, we interpret the law, we don't make it. So wherever the law is, we have to interpret it. We cannot, because we believe it shouldn't be here, we cannot vote no because if it's by right.
So I, I want to make a comment about, um, the SOA panels and the fact that, um... So I want to make a comment about the solar panels and the fact that we're talking about green energy and about how this has been... This is a big issue, obviously, for the nation in general and for the world. But when Trava came before us for their indoor cultivation, I did substantial amount of reading and I learned quite a bit regarding the electricity use. And I just want to make a comment in general for the board. I don't know, maybe everybody on the board already knows this. But one of the things that I did find out, and it's something that we as a town might wanna consider. Massachusetts has put in some regulations in terms of requiring... Massachusetts, only two states, I believe, that have put in some really strict regulations in terms of the lighting that's required in these types of facilities. But Wareham's a targeted area for these facilities for indoor cultural growth. And it really does put a strain on our utility companies. The reason that they, Massachusetts, decided to put some regulations is because towns have blackouts because of these indoor cultivation facilities. They're new. They're not something that we typically do. But the Northeast, when they approve things like marijuana, this becomes an issue. Wareham's not a farming town, but it is becoming a farming town for marijuana. So we have to be able to address and be educated on what these things are taking from us as a town. But so one of the towns in Colorado, it says environmentally conscious areas such as Colorado, Boulder County, have taken upon themselves to meet strict sustainability goals. The county requires commercial growers to either implement renewable energy in their facilities or pay $2.16 charged per kilowatt hour. The fee goes to the Boulder County Energy Impact Offset Fund, which educates cultivators on energy use practices and funds other efficient renewable energy products, projects. So I just wanted to bring that up because, you know, the greenhouse effect is...
Very good idea, but the ever source, we have ever source here. They're not gonna solemn electric if they don't have it. Putting the impact, excellent idea. Excellent idea. We can propose to go... It has to be voted by the body, but it's gotta go on a warrant. It has to be in article. We cannot impose these numbers. So you cannot tell a person, I'm not giving you because you're gonna put stress on the grid. This is not your jurisdiction or our jurisdiction. This is electric company jurisdiction. Now, if you wanna create a fund, we could create a bill, put an article. We vote on it. It goes to the planning board. Their legislative board who can bring it to the town meeting will bring it and somebody will speak for it. You could go to town meeting, speak, say, listen, let's put each kilowatt, tax these people, and we could retro back. We could go back to the one open already. So the one that already opened, we could go back with the article, say, we're gonna start charging you from now on $2 kilowatt, whatever it is. I think kilowatts only 13 cents. You can't charge $2. The bill would be 2 million a month.
Ah.
I mean, it have... I'm sure it'll be a fair number. And if it passes in town meeting, it passes, it is what it is. So it's a great idea, but this is not something we can impose. And it's not something like, again, we don't make the law, we interpret them. We cannot tell somebody, you can't have...
We make recommendations for the law.
Yeah.
Our town.
But you cannot tell somebody, I'm not gonna let you grow because you put impact on it.
I didn't...
Guys, if you may, I actually... I'm babysitting my nephew tonight, so if this is what we're gonna keep going back, may I leave?
Yeah, of course you can leave.
All right. Thank you, guys.
But I'm...
Oh, you're going.
Happy to have continued the conversation about solar.
So you're getting mad, you're taking your ball and leaving the girl?
I know. Kind of going back to a zoning, I think, a little bit right now, but I'm...
Somebody told me that. I think it's so funny.
Do I need to adjourn or before I leave?
No, you can leave.
We're good.
Because you know the renewable... Renewable energy.
No, we haven't. But we don't need... You guys could leave. You could recuse some. We could adjourn.
You in any hurry to get out of here?
What's the sense of a meeting? No, well, I can... It's all meeting if we're not all meeting.
As long as there's a quorum, we can keep discussing. Now, if one of us, if you guys both leave, one of us leave, that's it. It's dead. But you could leave. It's still on. If you wanna, you could stay or you could leave. Once a three people, it has to adjourn. It adjourns automatically.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Take care of that kid.
I will.
So, Richard, if you have commitment, you can leave. No problem. If you wanna leave, you can leave.
No, 'cause I'm... Right now, I'm very confused on how I was considered a liberal and he's a conservative.
We...
No, no. So I'm not leaving here because I don't want anybody labeling me, which I think is very unprofessional and doesn't have any grounds for that. So I don't know why I was called that.
That's all right. I can't...
I can't call you a certain name or that or thing.
That's true.
I'm supposed to be respected as a board member.
Okay, but I...
Or an assistant board member.
Right.
I'm not leaving anywhere. If somebody's mouth's gonna run off and assume that I'm something which I am not, clearly not a liberal, and I do not know what professional...
I don't mean in your politics, Richard.
Listen, we're not gonna...
You're not talking about your politics.
Call me a liberal. I'm not a liberal. I don't have any liberal in me.
Richard. All right. Let's make a motion to adjourn. We gotta stop it. Motion to adjourn.
I'd like to ask him some more questions about the solar if we don't... If you guys are...
If you guys are gonna argue, I'm gonna adjourn. I'm gonna close the meeting.
I'm gonna sit here.
Okay, but that's not a problem, Richard. I understand.
I just wanted to... I just wondered, going back, we kinda went away from your solar report and kinda got a little into zoning and going back to what you brought up, which is reporting back from the solar committee. My question is, does the solar committee feel as though their mission is to control the growth of solar or to... You know, what's... Is there like a mission statement that's been composed? Has there been any discussion like that? I mean, what's the tone of the board? Is it like, we gotta get this thing under control? Is it... I mean, I got lots of thoughts about solar. I think it would be great if we had, as a town, some kind of incentive for people to individually adopt solar. I'm a big proponent of solar. I feel that as time goes by, solar is gonna become more and more and more affordable to put in as it... And you see them on the roofs of houses all over the place. When I was gonna put a new roof on my house, I wanted to get solar shingles. At the time, to have solar shingles to do my entire home, my current electric bill and heating and transportation bill, I could have done it on the roof of my house with solar shingles. Unfortunately, the solar shingles weren't available and the cost was a little bit... It was 80 grand. Would have done my whole roof for a 100, 200-year roof. But again, we're replacing my electric, my heating, my cooling, and my transportation energy consumption use. So 80 grand, when you put all that together, isn't really... You'd get a 10-year return or something like that. So it wasn't... It's really not outrageous. And I feel it's all, it's gonna become more and more and more affordable. So my point that I'm trying to get to with too many words is it would be nice to see Wareham have some kind of an incentive. They said, okay, Jim, yeah, you put an $80,000 solar system on the roof of your house, we'll give you a 25% tax credit. Or we'll give you a break on your real estate taxes for the next 10 years.
I just talked to somebody that did that and they put $20,000 worth of panels on their house. Can you hear your head?
Richard.
I just talked to a customer and they put $45,000 worth of panels and they got a $20,000 rebate from somebody in the state that gave them back that $20,000. Yep. I think there is prob...
Statewide.
That's going on. I mean, Wareham...
But I don't... You're right, Richard. I don't think the town can afford to give you rebate. But you get rebate, like Richard said, from the state, from the federal. I'm sure you get... You buy a hybrid car, I think you get $10,000 in your tax return, something like...
Somebody's already doing it.
Right. So bottom line, we do... I personally encourage solar panel, but it's very important, like I said, to preserve the area for the future. I guess all of us...
Feel that way.
Most likely, we're not gonna buy a new house. But I'm sure the kids and the grandkids are gonna need houses. They need their businesses. And they're gonna suffer if we take all these rooms. And in the same time, like I said, nature of the beast, we have to encourage mostly conservation to let... Ease up the rules in remote area, in wetland area. For instance, if you do in a wetland, let you go to up to two feet from the wetland, not 50. If you do in... Because now, if you do commercial, they want 50 feet.